Join Council McKendrick for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
That's a start, isn't it?
Let's go with one tonight, Pete. That would have been my point.
Thank you, sir. Please join me for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for bringing us out here safely. We thank you for the change of weather and certainly the rain that is much needed. Father, we pray that you be with us through our meeting this evening. Help us do what's in the best interest of the town of Blythewood. Please be with those on the road. And we remember the mayor who's under the weather this evening. And please go before us and all we do is say may it be fruitful, timely discussion. It's just your responsibility.
Amen. You may be seated. Item F, council members' remarks. I'll start to my right. Those in the audience at home, your left, Councilwoman Page.
None at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Page. To my left, Councilwoman Fripp.
No remarks at this time here, please.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Fripp, Councilwoman Kendrick.
Thank you, sir. No remarks.
All right, thank you. And I also have no remarks. So we will skip over G and go directly to H, Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Driggers.
Thank you, sir. Very briefly, a couple of things of note is the financial report has been re-formatted. So we encourage you to please take a look at that. We also encourage any feedback that you make or provide to us on if we are meeting your expectations with that new format. But what we are trying to achieve in that is that you can see the current month activity and then we're reflecting the prior months as well. So you send a report, the July, August, September, and then year-to-date. And so we want to make sure that you're being able to reflect what we're seeing on a monthly basis as well as that activity which occurred to get us to year-to-date. And so again, if once you have an opportunity to look over that, any feedback would be very, very helpful to us. We're continuing to post that. And our check register is on our website. And a little bit later in the agenda, our Finance Director, Jennifer Edwards, will be providing an updated financial report to us. As you've probably noted, we are having some difficulty with our broadcast equipment. But this evening, we may or may not be able to get that equipment up and running during this meeting. We are good. Wonderful. That was very quick. So I'm glad that we were able to get us back online for that tonight. As a matter of activity, most of the past month has literally been spent in preparing for our form of government changes, working with our town attorney and getting the ordinance that you have before you this evening, updating our code of ordinance as relative to government. And so you have that first reading this evening and then making preparations for that changeover that will be taking place on November 26th. And so that's where a lot of the activity has been. Other than that, mostly just day-to-day operations. Certainly glad to answer any questions that you may have or if you have any follow-up active this evening. So I'm glad to take those any time I can just reach out.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Driggers. Does any member of council have a question for the Town Administrator? Hearing none. Mr. Driggers, I do have one question. This budget versus actual sheet that has been presented to us, is that, does that directly come out of QuickBooks? Is it come out of Excel? Okay.
It's downloaded into Excel. I have to manipulate it to get the numbers.
Okay, the only request I have is that when you flip the page, these headers of the month, the year-to-date budget over, they don't transfer. You can do a repeat, if you're exporting to Excel, you can do a repeat rows. Yep, yep. That way, I don't have to try to line it up and...
That's a very good point. I was doing the exact same thing there. Having to flip back to the columns there.
Yep, all right. Thank you for that. Where are we at? All right, item I, approval of minutes from the Town Council Regular Meeting from September 25th of 2025. Members of council, before you, are the minutes from that meeting? I'm sorry, September 22 of 25. Is there any corrections, amendments? If none, I'll be asking for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
So motion on the floor to approve by Councilman McKendrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Page. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Item J, financial report. The Finance Director, Ms. Edwards.
Okay, for the month of September, we have total income at $255,659.51. Year-to-date is $1,003,045.77. And our total expenditure, our expenses are $306,199.07 for the month of September and $790,148 for year-to-date.
Giving us a positive variance?
Oh, yes. So that would be $149,460.44 for net income for September and $514,539.29 for year-to-date.
And that is a surplus. All right. That's a good thing. All right. Does any member of council have a question for the Finance Director, Ms. Edwards? Hearing none, we'll move on to item two, public comment. This portion of the meeting is designed for public comments as provided for by municipal ordinance. Public comments must be limited to items on this agenda. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address council. All comments will be entered into the official record and no action will be taken during the hearing except... Except, ugh, itself. At this point, does anyone wish to speak? Has anyone signed up to speak? No. All right. As always, if there is a member of the public who wishes to speak on a certain item when we address that item, please either raise your hand or come to the podium where you will be recognized. Section three, presentations, we have two tonight. One is a Scout Motors update and two is a League of Women Voters by Ms. Janet Wedlock. At this point, the Chair recognizes Punam Patel with Scout Motors.
Good evening, council. Good evening. Pointing me today are some really special colleagues. We have Vice President of Brand and Strategy, Ryan Decker. We have Vice President of Production and Human Resources, Clarice Henderson. And then our Public Affairs Lead, Jamie Lovecar, over here, who is going to get us up and running and also draw the presentation along with us. So bear with us as we get that up and running. What I would say while he's getting that done is, a couple of years ago, one of the things that we committed to council is that we would come before this group on a regular basis, almost every quarter or so, just to keep you guys in the loop of what we're up to and as well as...
Thank you, Jordan. Keep you guys in the loop as well as offer you the opportunity to ask us questions and provide feedback. So that's what we're here today is to tell you about what we've been up to. So let's, before I can tell you, I'd rather show you. So draw your attention to the screen.
Breaks ground on its new $2 billion production center.
Launched in 2022, Scout Motors is reimagining the next generation of the iconic All-American Scout.
Seeing a vehicle made here in Blythewood, made here in our hometown, I think that's going to be exciting.
The production center will span over 3 million square feet.
This is a partnership between Scout Motors and the town of Blythewood.
It's estimated that Scout Motors' investment in South Carolina will bring over 4,000 job opportunities to the region.
I just think it's an amazing opportunity for all.
It's going to have a huge impact on this area.
I just can't help but wonder how they're going to get this thing built in time for production to start.
It is the dream of manufacturing iconic vehicles right here in South Carolina. The dream of breathing new life into the Scout brand. 1,600 acres total, 1,100 acres under development, 26 million cubic yards of earth moving, over 44,000 tons of steel, the equivalent of six Eiffel Towers. It's one of the largest earth-moving projects in the southeast.
A lot of sites, they start out much smaller than this and then they grow over the years. We're trying to do it all at once. It comes with a lot of challenges. That requires a big team, lots of experience and lots of energy and passion for this project.
It's the dream of creating not just a plant, but a community and a culture built from the ground up. Plant engineering within Scout, we manage, we plan, we integrate everything that you see here onsite and plowed. An automotive car plant starts with a body shop and from the body shop into a paint shop and then into an assembly. So these three main buildings, this is the task force here.
Construction is a rapidly changing environment. There have been some challenges, of course, the weather.
It's been record rainfall this year. We got hit by two hurricanes last year, including the particularly nasty one, Hurricane Helene.
Hurricane Helene makes landfall as a category four storm, triggering massive flooding across the Carolinas.
There are times where we have to assess whether or not we're going to shut down the site, if it's even safe for people to work.
The market is always shifting and we have to adapt quickly to meet customer demands. In 2024, this company makes the correct decision to integrate and range extender. For us, from a construction standpoint, drama, so to speak, because this is taking steel beams that are already installed and move it somewhere else. We have such a compressed timeline in order to get our pre-series vehicles into production. The stakes are so high in a project of that importance, especially to Scout, we have to stay laser, laser focused. But with our team and by really good planning, we managed to stay in time. We're not just building a traditional car manufacturing plants with no innovation here. This is the first electric paint shop in the United States. Nearly no more uses of gas. Another innovation is the use of the first industrial-scale heat pump in North America using air as a heat source. So the equivalents of gas we save by choosing the heat pumps, 1.2 million trees. That's what we save per year.
We're really working together as a group to build things from the ground up, whether that be policies, programs, trainings. We get to be innovative, so we get to take pride in the safety culture that we're building. We're able to look in the community and see what other benefits will our employees need in the future.
When I zoom out at the end of the day and I provide myself again with context and realize how special it is to be a part of a project from groundbreaking all the way to start of production, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Of course, that's not a nine-to-five job. So there's a lot of 12- and 14-hour days. I don't see nobody complaining because they believe in the product eventually and everybody here wants to get their job done.
My hope is that this site is going to be more than just a production site. It is going to promote growth in our community, but also that people who live in South Carolina can take pride that these new innovative vehicles were built right here in South Carolina.
Scout once inspired many and left its mark on the world. Today, it's on us to carry that spirit forward, honoring the past while building something that will inspire generations to come. I would imagine if I see the first Scout on I-77 driving by, the sense of pride that you have would be pretty amazing.
Okay, I'll take it from there. First of all, thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you for having Scout in Blythewood. I'm Ryan Decker. I lead Strategy and Brand for Scout Motors. I was also our second employee, which is my claim to fame. I took very careful notes during how you all kicked off your meeting, very professionally. Jamie, we have work to do to make our meetings a little more buttoned up. For tonight, I'm going to start really high-level, really big picture, what we're trying to do as a company. And then we're going to drill down really small to how's traffic on Blythewood Road. And we're going to cover a lot of ground in between. So starting with that very big-picture view, we, as all companies exist for, is to fix something, to solve something, to do a product or service, to create a company that is addressing a need in a market. And in our place, we do see very clearly four things which we are intending to fix. The first is a very big one and it's sort of the decline of broader American manufacturing, the decline of American industrialization. With that decline came a loss of a significant amount of jobs. More concerning, it came the erosion of a middle class. If you look at America since the 1970s, the middle class has gotten smaller and smaller in favor of a highly affluent class and unfortunately, less than affluent class. We want to fix that. We want these jobs to be more than jobs. We want these jobs to be helping to restore the middle class, starting right here in Blythewood. The second thing that we observed was the loss of Scout was way more than just the loss of a brand. It's the loss of what Scout stood for. And from 1960 to 1980, Scout stood for family togetherness. It stood for adventure. It stood for exploration. It stood for frankly optimism. We want to help bring some of that optimism back by bringing back Scout. The third thing is in an era that is increasingly digital and AI, screens everywhere, don't touch anything, the car is going to drive itself. We are fundamentally against that. We want these Scout vehicles being built right here to be things that you can drive with your hands, that you're not afraid to get muddy from time to time, that you can work with a glove. And we think that's actually exactly right for the moment. And the fourth one is a personal passion topic of mine, the debate over EV versus gas. In our case, by the way, I'll come to it, we think we have the best of both worlds. But we see it really as just American engineering, American manufacturing, doing really cool products with really great powertrains right here again in Blythewood. Regardless of whether you want to go EV or whether you don't, we think we have a very good answer for that. So this is very specifically what we're up to. My understanding is you may have heard some of this already, so I'm sorry if it's a little redundant, but you haven't heard it from me, so I'll bring a little bit extra spice. The first point is, we're very unique in how Scout Motors is set up. On one hand, we're a scrappy American startup that's literally hiring from two employees. We just cracked 1,300s. But on the other hand, we do have one of the world's largest OEMs, one of the world's largest car companies behind us in the Volkswagen Group. And that's a really unique thing. We can be entrepreneurial. We can be innovative. But you know, we have money. That's nice. We have access to expertise. We know how to build factories. We know how to get good pricing from suppliers, et cetera. The other thing we're doing is we are centering this clean sheet here in America. And in an era of tariffs and of all kinds of other geopolitical concerns, building the value chain, having our suppliers here, having our factory here, was the exact right decision when we made those decisions in 2022 and 2023. The second point, I have already hinted at it a little bit, we are bringing back the Scout brand. What American doesn't love a comeback story? We see ourselves as a comeback story of not just the brand, but again, that sense of authenticity, that sense of optimism. On the product front, these are no joke, legit, credible products. These are not posers. These are not cars that you put some chunky plastic on, pretend it's an off-roader. The product choices we are making from the fundamental architecture of the products, body-on-frame, solider axle, tire sizes, these are no joke off-roaders that are designed to go in and compete and win in the largest segments and profit pools in automotive. And our secret sauce, if you will, is that we're not afraid of a little old world. If you look at all the new entrants, again, they go full-screen, no buttons. Sometimes they don't even have door handles. We want to lean into what made an American truck an American truck. We just want to make it cool, modern, safe, innovative, technical. The fourth point, again, I hinted at it, what we call our Harvester Range Extender. This combines the best of EV performance, so great torque, great power, great acceleration, with the confidence of having a gas engine that can give you over 500 miles of range. Again, we think that's sort of an unaddressed sweet spot that the market hasn't hit. And we're building our entire company, we're building the factory, we're building the platform, we're building how you buy and service these vehicles around that idea. And speaking of buying and servicing, our fifth priority there is to put the customer right in the center of this company. We're building all-new products. We're building an all-new factory. We don't want to sell and service these vehicles the same way as they've been sold and serviced for the last hundred years. We also want to innovate there. We want to deliver upon trust. We want to deliver upon transparency. We want to be fast. We want to be digital. We want to make buying a Scout almost as easy as buying a T-shirt on Amazon. And those bottom-right points there, you know, again, we all know the figures. $2 billion of investment, over 4,000 jobs, over 5,000 supplier jobs on top of that. We don't view these as more than, as just jobs. We view these as transformations. And with that transformation comes things like access to childcare, access to healthcare, access to training and development. But beyond more than any of that, we want to be a good neighbor here in Blythewood. We want to lean into this community and we think that really boils down to one word, which is respect. So I'll walk you, or I guess together, all of us will walk you through three chapters tonight. I'll start with just describing you our point of view on what's going on in the American automotive marketplace because there's a lot of exciting stuff going on, especially from the Scout perspective. So what's going on in America? What's sort of driving automotive as we see it? As is often the case, I'm sorry, that's very hard on the eyes, saw a voice over it. As is often the case, any market starts with the customer. So what are American customers doing? There's a few clear trends. They're spending more time outside than ever before. COVID accelerated this, right? You couldn't go to bars and restaurants anymore, so what did you do? You went on picnics. You went on hikes. You went fishing. You went to pick your own orchards, et cetera. That trend has continued to go up from 2020. In addition to spending more time outside, they're building more things, whether it's DIY furniture, whether it's working on your house. Americans are more hands-on than they've ever been before. And the third point is, American is, America is the only country in the world that is de-urbanizing. Yeah, Americans are moving out of our largest cities, New York, Los Angeles, San Francisco, and moving to places like Blythewood. They're moving to more mid-sized cities, if not small towns. And we think that's a special thing. And when Americans do all of those things, they need a more capable vehicle. They, we think they need a Scout. The second thing is, you drive around, you all know the market. Over 70% of the market is now what we call mid-sized SUV and full-size pickup trucks. That's exactly what we're going after, those really large segments. That's where the business is. The third point, we covered industrialization. It's happening more than ever. There is more investment happening in this space. We're proud to be taking part of that right here. And then the fourth point is this idea of authenticity. For anyone who's following along, consumer brands, Carhartt, an interesting example, has become a luxury brand. Carhartt was a brand that belonged on a factory floor and now you see it next to like Dolce &amp; Gabbana stores in Paris. And we think that Scout has a little bit of that authenticity to it. And we want to lean into that, but maybe not go quite as luxurious Carhartt has become. So on the next page, again, I had mentioned this, but this is what we want to do in every way. We do think that there's a lot of ideals and lessons learned from the old world on the brand side and on the product side. So just unpack that on the brand side a little bit. When you look at what Scout was in the market, when you look at even their original ads, what did you see? You saw color. You saw smiling faces. You saw warmth. You saw some joyfulness. You saw a real sense of community and togetherness. Now, when you compare that to what most other competitors in our segment do, they're not like that anymore. They're all about like, let's go dominate something, like, let's go conquer something. Let's bring a lot of adrenaline and macho-ness to the category. We want to bring some of that togetherness, that warmth and that joyfulness back on the brand side. And on the product side, it's really clear. Americans still know how to open a car door. They still like to change their temperature with a switch. Not everything needs to be in a screen. Some of that heavy-duty American truck stuff is quite great, actually. But again, we want to make it safe. We want to make it exciting. We want to make it technical. We want to combine it with some of those new world features. An old Scout couldn't go probably 60 miles per hour. Now, you can go zero to 60 as quick as 3.5 seconds, if anyone wants to do that. You can tow up to 10,000 pounds. You can carry over 2,000 pounds. A lot of these features have become sort of modern table stakes and differentiators. And we also know how it's going. And I think we're constantly humbled by the reaction we've had since we started to sort of surface a little bit, actually over almost one year ago is when we showed our show cards to the world for the first time. But some of these headlines, we could not have written better ourselves. A proper four-by-four, a retro-futuristic Marvel is probably my favorite one. This is how you revive an iconic brand, the Wall Street Journal. It's hard for them to get the Wall Street Journal to cover anything. And for them to say the original SUV is back and it's electrifying, that's really great. But forget the press, we're most motivated by our customers. And we're very humbled by how many have put their name on our list to reserve their place in line through our reservation platform. It's exceeded expectations and beyond the quantity of reservations, I am most impressed by the kind of context behind them. We know we are talking to American customers in all 50 states. If you look at most new entrants, they heavily index towards California and New York. We're having great success here in the Carolinas. We have success in Texas. We have success in Indiana, you name it. We're able to kind of spread the love around all 50 states, which we're quite proud of. The other thing that we know we can do is addition to the geography, we're able to reach into people who are driving Teslas just as equally as we're reaching people who drive Ford F-150 and other trucks. So we're able to really appeal across geographies, across boundaries and across powertrains, which we're quite excited by. And so then, how are we doing? I think that vehicle gave us, or that video gave us a little bit of a sense. But to go from two employees in September 2022 to just having our third birthday, now over 1,000 employees, including 400 here in South Carolina, no easy, no easy effort, to go from basically signing an announcement to breaking ground, to having almost all of the buildings done in Blythewood, breathtaking speed, while at the same time, we were developing the vehicle, showing our first mules, which is what those kind of funny-looking camouflage products are there, putting them through the wringer, putting them through various testing. We're awarding parts, great progress, actually not bad for three years, work of work, worth of work. There's a lot more to do, but the 1,300 employees we now have are quite motivated to keep it going. We're going to do more testing. We're going to finish this factory and we're going to start selling cars. And we're going to create that sense of pride for you all every time you see a Scout being driven across America. Okay, and I think I just got a couple more pages, Jamie. Now, so as we talk about the moment, we're often asked the question, why Blythewood? Why South Carolina? And the reality is, we feel like this location is probably one of the most strategic locations in America. So if when you look for over 1,000 acres of land that's relatively flat, that has infrastructure, that has water, that has access to rail, but forget that stuff, does it have the people? And in our case, I think we can now safely say, we do in fact have the right stuff when it comes to who we're going to hire at this factory. We're super proud to be close to the technical colleges, to the community colleges, to the HBCU universities, to some of the nearby undergraduate engineering programs in the area. This is a very special location for us to be building this company around. And just like it was our intent to combine a little bit of old world and new world on the product front, it's the same spirit in the factory. We want this factory to be a sense of transformation, just like factories were for a long, long time. Beyond jobs, it's pride, it's community, it's training, it's careers. Again, it's that word, respect. But it's not a factory from 1980. It's a place where you can learn high technology, where you can learn AI, where you can learn efficiency, where you can learn processes, health, safety. You all can read the rest. This is a cool place to work. And our most recent announcement is beyond the initial $2 billion of factory investment, we're very excited to now have localized and built and invested in our own supplier park. So who will occupy this now huge building? We're expecting other suppliers to continue to invest to the tune of over $300 million that you see there. This is 1,000 more jobs. This is resiliency. This is just really exciting to have this onsite in our factory. And as you can see there, this is what we call our just-in-time sequencing. So this is where final parts will come in. This is where we will assemble the battery, again, high technology, new industry. And the third point is, this is where any Scout that gets accessories on it, it will happen again right here in Blythewood in this location. Okay, so we'll let this video cruise around. I'll hit some of the highlights. So what you're looking at there is the body shop. That's where the physical shape of the vehicle comes together there towards the bottom. Then there's that little offshoot, which if you saw in the video, that's the paint shop, which is frankly, almost dang near done at this point. That building's in great shape. And then it goes down that carousel through the main sort of central spine area, which is by the way, where a lot of our engineers and other colleagues will sit. And then it goes into the assembly shop, which is where final details and seats and instrument panels and materials will get installed. That big space right down in the bottom center, that's actually where the employee parking lot will be. And that was although a smaller moment, I got a kick out of seeing that come to life. It's like, oh, this is where 4,000 people are going to park their cars every day. So it was really cool to see that come to life. And then in the top right, that monstrous footprint there is that supplier park. Just to give you a sense of how big that thing is, that... Just to give you a sense of how big that thing is, that over three hundred million dollar investment is almost a factory in its own right. Over three hundred million dollars for the supplier park. So that's where other suppliers will come in and support the final product with just-in-time delivery of parts, accessories, and then that's where the battery will be built. Again, I want to emphasize, it looks like a big sandbox now, I certainly would have got a kick out of it with my Tonka trucks when I was a kid. Unfortunately, at some point, it will get grassed over and reforested and rewilded, and I shouldn't say unfortunately, for all of you all, it will look much more sightly here in the near future as it starts to get much more lush and green-looking like it originally did. You'll also see the large water retention ponds, obviously a big focus to make sure that this facility is appropriately handling wastewater and rainwater, and yeah. Okay, good timing, I think I ended right on time there. All right, so then, since I think the last time we were here, the milestone we were celebrating was that last steel. That, although not long ago, certainly feels like a long time ago, because not only now is the last steel up, the buildings are basically done. And now what's happening, the action is happening inside the buildings, where the final equipment is being installed, final infrastructure is being set up. The paint shop needs no explanation, you can get a really big sale, sense for how big these buildings are with that shot from the body shop. And a final thing worth calling out, I'm sure Clarice will expand on it, is the training center there in the bottom left. This is a really big deal, this is where all of our employees will be trained, developed, right there onsite as well. So this is some final facts and figures, and I think I have one more page after this one. Hopefully, all of this is well-known, but over two billion dollars, an additional six mil, six hundred million dollars of additional investment, in total, over ninety-five-hundred jobs between Scout Motors and all of our suppliers. And for the ones that aren't here, over fifty percent of our total supply base will be within two hundred miles of Blythewood. Again, given tariffs, given geopolitics, that's something we're doing very deliberately. Let's localize everything as much as we can. A ton of dirt, a ton of steel, huge amount of space when it comes to buildings and acres, and ultimately, again, a huge source of pride. Last page, so I mentioned I was going to come down to the smallest, I'll offer you my point of view on what we clearly recognize is probably some of the frustrations and the challenges right now, not naive to it. The first is traffic. So what I will say about traffic is there's great cooperation right now between the DOT and Richland County on just doing the best we can here. We're not naive, we recognize in this rapid, dynamic environment where there's tons of construction activity, it's probably a point of frustration, the good thing is, it will come to an end. A lot of the work that we're doing when it comes to the overpass, when it comes to the interchange, is designed to make traffic permanently better. There are some no-regrets things we're doing now, of course, we're not scheduling activity during peak commuting hours, we're going to continue to do those little things to make this as best as we can make it. And then the second point is our new one, I mentioned that large supplier park footprint, this is where we are now doing a little bit of blasting. Why are we doing blasting? It's simply faster, and although it might be louder in some moments, it gets the job done quicker as opposed to doing longer, steadier drilling. All of this is needed to stabilize the foundation for that very, very large building. We're doing everything, of course, following very close permits, following very close state regulations, we're optimistic this work will be done soon. So I'll pause there, if there's no immediate questions, I think we'll have an opportunity later, and now I'll hand it over to Clarice then.
Good evening. Never give an HR person a mic, that's a mistake. But I started with Scout in April, and I will tell you, the main question that I got was, when are you going to start hiring? When are you going to start hiring for the site? And I will say, I was so excited, back in July, we answered that question, and we hit that milestone. When we decided to manage, and we're not, you know, it is a ramp-up, but we decided that we needed to bring on some of our maintenance folks, and we have done, we posted maintenance roles for senior techs and techs. These are very, very skilled, specific roles, specific people to help bring equipment into the plant and those things. So we started and launched in partnership with Radio C to start recruiting and hiring those maintenance techs. I will tell you, we were very, very intentional about our messaging around it, we were only hiring a certain amount, we didn't open the floodgates, again, it's a ramp-up, but the overwhelming response that we got from candidates locally into those roles has been phenomenal. So right now, we actually have, and we've just had our first class that graduated on October fourteenth. We have a second class that is actually graduating tomorrow, so we will actually have eighteen that we have hired. And if I wanted to show you, where did our candidates come from? Our candidates came from right here in Richland County, in Lexington County. If you go to the next one, very, very concentrated, tells how many applicants we got, how many, what, what areas they came from, and again, very, very excited about that group. What's most important about knowing that group, of the eighteen that we've hired that have started, only one didn't come from this market, meaning they didn't come from Richland, they didn't come from Lexington, they didn't come from Kershaw County, they actually came from South Carolina, but from Charleston. So again, very exciting because I think the other piece that I heard a lot is, are you going to hire locally? Yes, we've hired locally, and I will tell you, our maintenance managers, and again, if you've worked in a factory, you know how a factory runs, those technical roles are critical. They are very scrutinized, and I will tell you, our maintenance managers were so excited about the level of talent that is here in this market that we were able to recruit and hire. So here is our first class that actually graduated on October the fourteenth. You will see that these are just really, really sharp candidates, they're very excited to be on board, we're very excited to welcome, welcome them into the business. But that's our first group, and we have another group that is graduating tomorrow. So more and more, we will be hiring more and more technicians within the next few weeks with another lump or a, another surge of hiring happening at the beginning of the year. So just as a reminder, thirty-five-hundred assembly jobs, that's highly tech, qualified roles for maintenance, shop floor, all of those, and then of course, our machine operators and our electricians, and then five thousand, five thousand I wish, five hundred office jobs, basically wrapping around engineering, and of course, our management positions in the paint shop and logistics. So when we look at what that means, that means four thousand jobs for Scout, but more importantly, it also means fifty-five-hundred jobs for our suppliers. These are good jobs, well-paying jobs, and that will attract and really provide career and lifestyle changes for our candidates that, that actually come on board with us or with our suppliers. So when you look at it, we're still just in stage one, we know that we are going to get to stage through, two and three, when we talk about growth and expansion, but right now, it's about building a great foundation, building a great operation, putting in the systems, tools, and processes that will allow us to attract and retain talent. But that's where we're at, it's a very, very exciting time, and again, just a critical period in our, in our history when we're able to hire and bring on our folks that will actually work in the plant. And of course, we have to ask, if you know anybody, these are the QR codes, we definitely for production as well as our salary rolls, if you know anybody, send them to ScoutMotors TechJobs.com, and they can apply right there. Thank you.
As if everything you've heard already isn't magical enough, I'm going to share more magic with you. Recently, you may or may not have seen a commercial on your TVs or during Sunday Night Football celebrating the Blythewood community. If you haven't seen it, we'd like to show it to you one more time. There's a little bit of a delay on the sound. Should we try to start over? While he's doing that, just for your awareness, every single person that was filmed within that commercial was either a Scout employee or a community member within the Midlands market, and so you'll probably see a few familiar faces and a few spots around town that you drive by frequently.
It's a, it's a good commercial.
It is, it's great.
It's a good commercial.
It is on YouTube, yep, yep. All right. So, what's the response been? Fantastic. As you see here, thanks to our friends in the local media, we've gotten nothing but positive reviews on this. Across the community, there is an enormous sense of pride because they see their friends and themselves in the Scout story, and it's been really fun to celebrate together. But we also wanted to have a great day with four thousand of our local friends in honor of the four thousand employees that we're going to have, and so we partnered with a lot, a lot of local coffee shops, the one you see here, Blooming Bean, of course, is in Blythewood, and some others around town, and the response was phenomenal. Across town, all four thousand cups were very quickly claimed, and you see here where they posted on their social medias and shared with their friends that they got to take advantage of this incredible opportunity, which made their Friday a little bit better. We also are being very deliberate in our outreach, we realize that, you know, yes, we are building something great, but we can also bring others alongside us. So earlier this year, we hosted a Supplier Day event here at Doco Manor alongside the South Carolina Department of Commerce, as well as Richland County, had a great response there. We also participated last week in the Richland County Small Business Forum that also had a great turnout, so really starting to develop a lot of meaningful relationships with local employers as we build from the ground up. And so a good example of that next is going to be our food truck program. So earlier this, this month, we decided, okay, we're starting to have a lot more people on the production center site, obviously, we're not at a point where we have a cafeteria that's fully operational, how can we reach out to the local business community and partner with them to make sure that their bellies are fed? Well, we put out an all-call, we said, if you're interested in partnering with us as a food truck, let us know, and we had an incredible response. And after a lot of vetting, we ended up right now with forty different food trucks that we're partnering with, that are rotating on a schedule five days a week, and it's, as you see here, there's lots of smiling faces and happy people that they don't have to leave the site right now in order to have a meal. And that's going to only continue, that's been very positive. So, we're also having a lot of fun in the process and giving back. And so here's four different nonprofit organizations that we have worked with through employee volunteerism to participate in meaningful projects that allow us to leave a little fingerprint within South Carolina. Of course, the Big Red Barn Retreat, everybody is familiar with that, right up the road, starting to have a great relationship with them. And then Palmetto Trail, we've participated in a couple different events with them, building their trestles, also building trailheads that will be located throughout the state of South Carolina. Habitat for Humanity, we've, just this past Friday, we had over forty employees out there that were participating in building a home in Casey in honor of President Carter, who was a very active member of the Habitat for Humanity family. And then every quarter, we have committed to adopting a highway and, and cleaning and making sure, and as Ryan said, being that good neighbor. So as you know, community road's a little bit under construction right now, so while that is underway, we're also expanding and trying to find other parts of town that may need a little TLC. So that's why you see that photo right there in front of Town Hall, where our employees were able to come and clean some of this local area as well. And then this past weekend, we had a lot of fun coming back to the Blythewood rodeo. You see our team members there, we got to reconnect with a lot of local Blythewoodians, I'm going to call them, and also give away some fun giveaways like bandanas and T-shirts and whatnot, and you'll probably start seeing those popping up around town. But, you know, we, because we, we don't, we don't get bored. We have a couple of really exciting things that we have coming up, and we want to invite all of you too. Community connections. In addition to keeping the council informed, we also want to create that similar space for the community. And so twice a year, we've committed to having that community connection forum. We did it in the spring here at Doco Manor, we're going to do it again in the fall at the Big Red, Big Red Barn Retreat on November twenty-fourth, partnering with them this time in the spirit of Scout giving or Thanksgiving, and so there will be an element of that to celebrate. And then of course, the Blythewood Christmas Parade. We look forward to being back at that, I believe on December sixth, seventh, seventh. So you'll see us back there again with a, a whole host of employees and potentially another heritage vehicle following us behind. So I think Ryan really did a good job of telling you the Scout story in the spirit of Scout, and I'm not going to reiterate that too much, but I do want to remind you that as much as we're doing, we are at the end of the day, a car company. And so there's something really fun that we want to share with you that happened right here in Blythewood just a couple months ago. So our engineers are working hard to test our vehicles and get them ready for the public, and this was right there on our site earlier this summer. So the conversation continues, this is only the starting point. If you want to stay in touch with us, there's, take a picture of that, there's, there's a lot of different ways that you can stay connected. The other thing that's a little bit newer is, I encourage you to all follow us on our new Facebook page, it's Scout Motors South Carolina, and it has all kinds of stuff that is local, that we're up to, ways that you can also stay engaged with us if we're out in the community. Any questions? Yes?
I have two questions. The first one is, and I appreciate your accelerated pace, but the noise went on past midnight on Saturday, I'm just curious, there's a way, when I speak on the map, there's a lot of neighbors and ashtrays, if there's a way or a plan to curtail it and recuperate that one, and the fire dragon starts about six-ten in the morning, it lasts several hours, and I've gotten the customers to that preparation, but the, the noise and the machinery, I'm not sure what it is, that moves around and continues past midnight, I'm just thinking, if there could be more, it's an agreement that we could curtail that during sleeping hours.
I absolutely think we can have a conversation about it, thank you for sharing that feedback, let's, let's explore and look into it.
Thank you very much. I have some recording to do. So my second question is for HR, if you look at some of the Chinese factories that are currently building, producing, and bringing to market these, it looks like, it doesn't look like inside their manufacturing second lines, there is use of industrial robots and robot, people and a robot. So for the four thousand jobs that you projected, I'm just wondering if you were having a conversation about how robotics, and I'm all for advanced technology, and you see that affecting the human job in the next few years?
So you can see me say this, so we partner really closely with the manufacturing, yes, we all have robots, yes, we don't have robots, we're not robust, trade people don't have humans, but it will never be without the, the relationship with the operator around that department, but I'm not consenting to that, right, you do others, you want the leadership out of each and the body, but again, it's about the partnership between that and footpath, but if it's working in our operations.
Yes.
Where are we just being able to?
Um, where are we, just being able to purchase, uh, as a Scout in South Carolina? With the ranks, uh, sent, um, to the end user, as it says.
As of right now, we're, we're in the middle of a two-year session. And so, it will be taken up again once, in January, once the session goes back into the House, into the State House.
And one of the big things that a lot of your competitors, Bronco and Jeep, are the ones that I think of, is the lifestyle, as it said, with, with those big products and aftermarket suppliers. How is the interest in, in the Scout for aftermarket suppliers for upgrading, for off-roading? That, that, I think.
That's a fantastic question for Ryan Decker, right over here.
Yeah, it's, it is a great question because, one, customers wanna do it, and, two, it's also just a great business. I can tell you the figures. A Ford Bronco customer typically spends $1,800 on accessories, right? So, not even mentioning the aftermarket white label stuff. So, one, first point is that Supplier Park is designed to outfit and accessorize Scout vehicles ourselves. Those are Scout-developed accessories. It's all the things that you should expect. We'll have a full portfolio at launch, which is just cool. But, yes, then, there's a whole nother category of, okay, what other suppliers out there, I won't name them out loud, but the ones that traditionally do roof racks, rock sliders, bumpers, winches, they have all reached out. We are already working together on a variety of white labeled accessories that will be sold through other providers. But first and foremost, we wanna get the ones in Blythewood done right.
Yes?
What's the age to work at Scout? The reason I ask, I said, "What's the age to then to work over in Scout?"
18 years old, 18 years old to be able to work.
I ask if we all want ideas for the cops, especially the cops. Some of them, they could do the cops. So, coming out of high school, you have to visit, have a local high school, if you have no knowledge of that.
Okay, so I think you're asking a great question. So, one.
Ms. Clarissa, can you, could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
People can't hear at home.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. You're asking a great question. So, yes, a big push for us right now as from a workforce development strategy is K through 12. So, we are already partnering with some of the school districts to get them excited or interested in manufacturing and changing kind of the perception around it. So that when those students come out, to your point, everyone doesn't have to go on the same path. There are going to be opportunities for folks to come right out of school, come in and work at Scout. Uh, we do have, that's why our training programs are so critical. We recognize that we have to develop talent, and we will do that. But 100%, we want folks to, we, we want students to understand that they have an opportunity to come right to, to work for Scout or go to college, but there's multiple paths into Scout. And that's one critical one for us.
Could any, does any member of council have a question?
I'm good.
Use your microphone, please. Councilwoman Prip. A little closer.
Where, let's say, for instance, I purchase a Scout vehicle. Where would I have that vehicle serviced? Unless I was in Charleston or California, where, I'm just curious.
Yeah, as part of that commitment to put the center of the company that I mentioned, we are building our own network of sales and service facilities. So, we will have, we will have built our own network where we want you to come and see us directly at our own brick and mortar facility, locations of which are still very much TBD, but that's the intent.
Okay, nice. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? Hearing none. Mr. Ryan, Ms. Clarissa, Ms. Poonam, thank you so much for that in-depth presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B under Section 3, Presentation, is the League of Voters, I apologize, League of Women Voters. The Chair recognizes Ms. Janet Wedlock. Ms. Wedlock, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Councilmembers, staff, members of the public, voters, all of you, I expect. Good evening. My name is Janet Wedlock. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of the Columbia area, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering voters and defending democracy. For over 100 years, seems longer, we have worked to ensure all citizens are informed and engaged in the democratic process. One of our key initiatives is Vote 411. It's a comprehensive online guide of, dedicated to providing voters with polling locations, registration details, and candidate information about local, state, or federal elections. And you can access Vote 411. You just go to your nearest browser and key in Vote 411. And you will, if you enter your address, you can find all kinds of information about what kind of races there are in your area, what's on your ballot, all kinds of voting information that people need to know. And they need to know before they go to the polls. Well, no. You all know who you're gonna vote for when you go to the polls in November. But, but some of the rest of us may need to know. As a nonpartisan organization, the League of Women Voters does not endorse or oppose candidates. Instead, we allow the candidates to speak directly to voters in their own words. So, this year, for example, on September 12th, our League of Women Voters emailed all the candidates who had filed to run for the municipal elections that are coming up on November 4th. And candidates who wished entered their information. And on, on September 23rd, we published that, and that information is online for all of you to see. And I think most of the candidates here in Blythewood did enter in information into Vote 411. Another voter resource that we prepare and update regularly, and we'll have to update it again after November, are, are directories of municipal officials and county elected officials. We, we publish quite a few of these directories. The one I brought is, is applicable at least up until November 4th to the Blythewood area. And we'll update it, of course, after the election is, is over. And those directories are usually in your public, public library. But, if you go to the QR code or to the League of Women Voters Columbia website, you can navigate to the resources area, and you could print your own copies of these directories anytime you want, and as many as you want, and you can even choose your own color paper. Our league is committed to supporting the voters in Blythewood to ensure they have information they need to participate fully in upcoming elections. We, for example, supported the referendum that you recently held and had information in Vote 411 about that referendum. And I appreciate that we can answer any question, I hope I can answer any questions that you might have afterwards. In closing, I appreciate your dedication to our community. You, you work hard, and, and, and I, I've had the opportunity to see you here at work and, and follow the work that you've been doing. And you have a big task ahead of you in the change to the new form of municipal government that you, the voters have selected. And I, I don't wanna stand in the way of that, of that work. If you have any further questions, you can email, you can email the, the League. We have an info email address at our website, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wedlock. And you're right, we did have a referendum, and so, when you reprint your flyers, you'll be able to change our form of government to council manager. That is correct. And the website for 411 is vote411.org. And the Women League of Voters website is L, gotta take my glasses off so I can see, LWVcolumbiaSC.org. Thank you again, Ms. Wedlock. Section 4, Boards and Committee Updates. We'll start with letter A. Doco Matters Park Foundation, Councilwoman Page, do you have any updates? Thank you, Councilwoman Page. Central Midlands Council Form of Gov, Council of Governments, Mayor Griffin. He is not here, so we will punt that to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. And item C is Richland County Transportation Penny Advisory Committee, also known as TPAC. Councilwoman Kendrick, do you have any updates?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I emailed out to council and staff earlier today an email kind of outlining how TPAC has moved forward with the ranking of the 2024 New Penny projects. It's exciting to see those projects come to light and how they're scoring those and which projects are rising to the top. Clearly, Blythewood has been overlooked in the past when it comes to the road projects. And it's, I'm pleased to say, we have several projects in both the intersections as well as the widening proj, projects that are, in, in the widening projects, we have four projects in the top 10. In the intersection projects, we have five projects in the top 10. That, this will be posted on the TPAC website probably within the next 30 to 45 days. It's gonna be a very interactive site, so residents of Blythewood can go on and see which projects, how they were scored, how they were ranked, and where the project will lie. So, it's exciting news. I do have those up here after the meeting, if anybody would like to come and look at those. But there's some exciting things coming forward regarding the New Penny. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kendrick. That includes the Board and Committee Updates. Section 5, Old Business. Item A is Discussion and Approval of Town Events. This is an action item. Before we get started on this, if it pleases the council, I would like to recommend that we defer this item to the special call meeting that is in Section 6, Item B, given the fact that there are, what'd you say, about eight events. We've only had a couple of days to look at it. There is some in-depth reporting in here, which I appreciate. And so, I applaud you, Ms. Jordan, for that. This could potentially take all night. So, if it pleases the council, I'd take a motion to, I don't wanna say postpone indefinitely, but to defer to the special call meeting that is tentatively scheduled for November 10th, although I will be asking for a slight modification of that date. If anyone, if no one has any objections, can move that to the next special call meeting.
Staff, Ed, is that okay with you? Is it causing roadblocks for you between now and then? Make the motion that we move the event budget breakdowns to the November 10th requested special call meeting further down the agenda.
There's a motion on the floor to defer Old Business, Item A, Discussion and Approval of Town Events. Action item 2, the special call meeting that is tentatively scheduled for November 10th. There's a second. All those in favor, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Great. Old Business, Item B, Second Reading of an Action Item, Discussion and Approval of Ordinance 2025.006, Amending the Business License Ordinance of the Town of Blythewood to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Mr. Driggers.
There's no new information regarding that matter. I certainly like answering your questions, but, but nothing new since we're here.
Mr. Town Attorney, do you have anything to add?
Uh, I do not, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Councilmembers, does, do you have any questions, concerns regarding the second reading of Ordinance 2025.006? Councilwoman Prip, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kendrick? Hearing none, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Ordinance 2025.006 as presented.
Shall I move?
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve Ordinance 2025.006. Is there any discussion? I didn't think there would be. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving to Section 6, give me a moment. New Business. First reading of Action Item, these are both action items. Paragraph A, Discussion and Approval of Ordinance 2025.008, Amending the Town's Code of Ordinances to Reflect the Change in Form of Government. The Chair recognizes Town Attorney Pete Valdezal.
Uh, thank you, sir. As has been discussed tonight, there was a referendum that was held on July 29th, 2025, and at that referendum, the voters voted to change the form of government of the Town of Blythewood from the mayor council form of government to the council manager form of government. There is more that needs to be done to put that into operation. Obviously, the voters have spoken, but also, town council at this point needs to amend some of the code of ordinances to reflect that change in the form of government. Uh, so what is in front of you in your packets this evening in the form of Ordinance 2025.008? And there is a clean version and also a redline version to show the changes that are suggested to put that change in the form of government into operation. And I also took the liberty of cleaning up a few things in, in the town's ordinances as well in, in doing this, and I can just quickly go through the, the different changes here. First of all, in Section 10.03, in the definition section, just added a definition of Town Manager. And also, sort of, as a catch-all or any other places in the code where the, the term Town Administrator may be used, it just signifies that that will mean the Town Manager. In the second part, in Section 10.13, this deals with municipal uniform ordinance summonses. And the change that was made in there is there was a part in subsection C which allowed the mayor to sign an ordinance summons. Well, now, under the council manager form of, of government, it, it would be, I guess, more proper for the Town Manager or other designee of the Town Manager to sign ordinance summonses such as code enforcement officers. I don't think the town has any code enforcement officers at, at this time, but they can be, can be appointed. And like I say, some other things to just clean some things up in Section 30.01, in the last sentence of subsection A, just to clear, clear that up and make that consistent with the state common law. If there is a member of council that is disqualified from voting due to a conflict of interest, that council member is not to be counted for purposes of a quorum. And that, that was an open question in state law until, I, I don't know, until sometime after this, or rid, these ordinances were enacted. So, that's just, just cleaning that up. And then, in 30.02, some changes were made there to make all the references to the Town Manager. And then, in subsections B and C, to make the amendment of agendas for regular meetings and special call meetings consistent with what the Freedom of Information Act requires. And obviously, if anyone has been here, I mean, we've all been here, but if anyone's been observing, that, those are the rules that we have been following, but now, it's also, will be stated in the, in the town's ordinances. And so, I guess that really gets us to, to the, to the main part of this. The next, all of the next sections are what puts into operation the change in the form of government. 31 point 01 just clearly states that this will be the council manager form of government. 32 point 01 was deleted and will be reserved if anything want, can be put in there later, because all of those positions, as you'll see, will be dealt with later in, in subsequent sections. 32 point 02 deals with powers and duties of council, which are somewhat different under the council manager form of government. And I will say that almost all of 32 point 02 is taken directly from State Code, Section 5 dash 13 dash 30. Section 32 point 03, which talks about the town manager and the duties of a town manager, or at least, um, first of all, it spells out that the town manager will be the chief executive and head of the administrative branch, and then goes into some other particulars for the town manager. That is taken almost directly from 5 dash 13 dash 90. And I'm talking about subsection A of 32 point 03. Subsection B of that same section is taken almost directly from 5 dash 13 dash 50. Subsection C, which also deals with the town manager serving at the pleasure of council and other, other things about hiring a town manager is taken from 5 dash 13 dash 70. The next subsection D is from 5 dash 13 dash 60. And then subsection E, which spells out the, I guess, lines of supervision or who has supervision and direction of town employees and officers. That is taken directly from Section 5 dash 13 dash 40 of the state code. And then, like I said earlier, all of those other positions that were listed in an earlier section have now, now each have their own section. Section with, as far as town clerk, the town attorney, and a municipal judge, if the town desires to start a municipal court. One thing I will mention about town clerk, which is different also under the council manager form of government. The town clerk is appointed not by council, but by the, by the town manager. So, that's what's made clear in 32 point 04. The other, the other three positions, the town manager, town attorney, and municipal judge, those are all still appointed by, by council, so similar to the other, other form of government. And then finally, Section 35 point 01 was just amended, and that deals with the purchasing agent and duties of a purchasing agent for the town. Makes clear that the town manager will have, will have that, that duty as well. So, to just clear that up. And so, like I say, a lot of this just follows state law, which it, which it should. But if anyone has any questions about the substance or content of these, of these amendments, certainly be happy to attempt to answer those questions. But that is an overview of where these changes come from.
Thank you, Mr. Balthazar. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the town attorney? We did receive these on October the 14th, so we've had a couple of weeks to look at them. So, does anyone have any questions for the town attorney?
Just one question, a clarification, if I may.
Sure.
Pete, in Section 30 point 01, the one you cleaned up, and by the way, I, I think you and your team did an amazing job of getting the ordinance really, really nailed down on your first attempt.
Thank you, sir.
That cleanup in 30 point 01, where you say, "A member present but disqualified from voting on a question by state law due to a conflict of interest shall not be counted for the purposes of a quorum," we're adding the "not" to make it line up with state statute, I believe. Is that correct?
To line up with the state common law.
Okay, state common law. So, here's my question. If we're in a meeting and a quorum has been established, very much like tonight, and we have an issue come up that may, in this case, disqualify one of us or two of us, that disqualifies the question, not the meeting, correct? We just would not be able to vote on that question?
Correct, correct. If, if a, the quorum would only be lost for that question, correct.
Thanks, sir.
But it would also take three members to be disqualified, would it not?
Right.
Not tonight, it wouldn't.
Yeah.
Tonight, it would take two.
Tonight, it would take two.
Tonight, it would take two, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
I, I thought that was, I thought that was the correct, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Ms. Page? All right. Hearing no further questions, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2025 dot 008, amending the town's code of ordinances to reflect the change in the form of government.
With pleasure, I make that motion.
Motion made by Councilman McKendrick and seconded by Councilwoman Page. Is there any further discussion on the topic? Don't see the need for a roll call vote, so all those in favor, state their, state positions. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, members of council. Item B, Discussion and Approval to Hold a Special Call Meeting on November 10th, 2025 for the Second Reading of Ordinance 2025 dot 008, Change in the Form of Government. Mr. Driggers, would you mind getting your microphone?
Give it to me.
Oh, your microphone.
Yes, sir. Obviously, the form of government change is effective by earlier ordinance on November 24th. That is the date of your next meeting. And so, for this to be enacted prior to that meeting, the effective date, there's a need for a special meeting to be able to have that second reading for discussion and ultimately a vote. We've looked at our schedules, when this facility is available, and we've offered as a suggestion, next, two weeks out, on November the 10th. There was a question whether or not the 12th possibly could be made available. We also checked on the availability of this facility, and it is available on the 12th as well. Now, for the purpose, so I'll leave it at that.
No, no, finish, finish your call.
Okay, so, with the original intent of that being the only subject matter for that date, the 10th or the 12th very well could have worked. But the, but the 12th, I am unable to be with you in that evening of that date. I will be here during the day, but I will not be able to be here that evening to a earlier scheduled conflict. And I'm concerned that if the event, town events matter is on that agenda, that, that I really probably should be with you for that discussion. And so, I just offer that as information.
Well, that makes it very easy. Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm good. Does anybody else have an objection to November 10th? Any schedule, scheduling conflicts? None? Councilwoman Fret? Councilwoman McKendrick?
Depending on how November.
Well, you'll still be here.
I'll still be here, yes.
You'll still be here.
No, I'm good.
All right. So, with that said, I'll be looking for an approval to hold a special call meeting on November 10th. What time? 6 o'clock?
Your, it's your discretion.
6 o'clock, working for everybody? Pete?
Yes, sir.
Anybody object to 6:00 P.M.? Miss Durs? Okay. On November 10th, 2025, at 6:00 P.M., for the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2025 dot 008, Change in the Form of Government, and for discussion and approval of town events as a secondary item. You're looking for a motion to approve. Some move? Councilman McKendrick with a motion. I'll be looking for a second. Councilwoman Page with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mark your calendars, November 10th at 6 o'clock. All right. Section seven, Executive Seven, Executive Session Pursuant to South Carolina Code Annotated 30 dash 4 dash 70. There are four items under this section. A, Discussion of Negotiations, Incident to Propose Contractual Arrangements for Assessment and Recommendations Regarding Manor Operations to Establish Financial Break-even Operational Business Plan Requested by Town Administrator Driggers. Item B, Discussion of Negotiations, Incident to Propose Contractual Arrangements for Professional Search and Recruitment Services for a Town Manager, requested by Councilwoman Page. Item C, Discussion of Negotiations, Incident to Propose Contractual Arrangements and Proposed Purchase of Property, Proposed Recreation Complex, requested by myself. And D, the Receipt of Legal Advice, where legal advice relates to a pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege or the settlement of legal claims, layman, and coggin's. Before we motion and move into Executive Session, Mr. Driggers, I only have one question about item A. Is this particular topic covered under Executive Session?
I believe so. Very similar to the discussion that we held month before last relative to audit services regarding the manner.
Okay.
It is what it is.
The attorney states that it is what it is.
One what?
One or two layman's plans and one coggin's.
It says right there in the agenda, layman is one thing, coggin's is another subject. Layman is one subject, coggin's is another subject.
All right. Members of council, I'll be looking for a motion to go into Executive Session. Some move? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, where Executive Session will take a two to three minute recess. Thank you. The ayes have it, we're in executive session, we'll take a two to three minute recess, thank you.